Good evening. Thank you, thank you all of you for being here tonight. Commissioner Schultz should feel special because we just had a room full. And now, um, we, we, we look thin out there. So you should feel special tonight. That mean everybody came to see you tonight. Hope everybody's doing well. I hope everybody enjoyed. Thank you, sir. If you would just stand on the other side over there and, and if you would pray for our community. And, um, please remember that we are dealing now with new numbers of COVID. And so please keep those people in your prayers as well. Thank you so much.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you tonight in Jesus' name, Lord. We sense this opportunity together here tonight, Lord. And we'll work together, Lord, for our parents, Lord, our great children, we will do. And we just pray, God, tonight, that every decision we made, be made for everybody, God. That we can all work together as one. So we pray tonight, Lord, for those that are suffering right now.
If she would lead us in our pledge tonight. Thank you so much. Um, next, on our agenda adoption. Um, Commissioners, if you would, um, take an opportunity to remove item number 21. With that change, I'd seek a motion that we approve the agenda. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Kerr.
If you would, there is a, also added today, there's, you should have before you, an agreement for sale of realty and release of easements. This is for a Bear Creek property. Um, and I would request that we amend the agenda to include that particular item.
We're gonna replace item number 21 with the stubs sales agreement. Commissioner Schultz?
Ms. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as amended with the removal of item number 21 and substitute stubs sales agreement for item 21.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you. Next is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that will allow citizens to come up and make comments about agenda topics only. You may come at this time. You have three minutes to do so. Agenda topics only. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Um, next, um, is the chairman's report. I got a couple of people I want to recognize, uh, tonight. Um, the first recognition is our Superior Court Clerk. Um, the Superior Court Clerk Association of Georgia has awarded the ECL AT Award for 2020 to the Newton County Clerk of Superior Court, Ms. Linda Hayes. The ECL AT stands for Exceptional Commitment Leadership Accomplished and Teamwork Award. The Association cited Linda's professionalism, dedication, and leadership skills over her ye- over her years of tenure. So we want to take an opportunity to recognize her tonight and thank her for what she do for our community. Also tonight, um, we're gonna ask if Pastor Walden, if he would come up and, I don't know if you're gonna bring your family with you, but if you guys would come up tonight. I don't know if the sheriff want to come up with you tonight. Sheriff, you want to come up with him tonight? Sometimes in your community, you look for special people who go above and beyond the call of duty to make people lives better. And Mr. Walden, Pastor Walden, um, has did that. He's, he's went above and beyond, um, his call to make sure that people lives, um, change. And tonight, we want to say, "Thank you, sir, for your work, for your kindness, and for your love for people." Um, I got a letter here that says, um, Chairman Baines. Um, "Yes, sir, I am writing about a citizen, a citizen of Newton County who deserved to be recognized. I'm speaking of Reverend James T. Walden, Sr., who lives in Covington, Georgia." I won't give out his address. "Who lives in Covington, Georgia." And I won't give out his cell phone, his number either. He says, "I'm not from here, just pass, just passing through. I was going through a very tough time with PTSD and having my part, and having my part, and having my partner in the US Marine Corps take his life. I am in closing, I am in closing this letter I sent to Sheriff Brown about what Reverend Walden, who is also the chaplain at Newton County Sheriff Office. At the point I'm ready to commit suicide, I happened, I happened to by chance or by the grace of God run into Reverend Walden as I was traveling through Newton County. He was kind enough to help me, pray with me, and help me make the decision not to take my life. PTSD, which was caused by the wars I had been in serving our country, is very bad. After speaking and spending time with Reverend Walden, I found out he is a 35-year pastor, a certified chaplain, and also a certi, and also certified with the Veterans Medical Center with training in PTSD and etc. for military. I also found out that he had, that he has helped to save other lives, more than five veterans who would have died if not for his understanding and love for this country. He is truly what a hero is all about. I hope that he gets some kind of recognition through the county, the state, and sheriff office, as well as the military officials." So I want to take this opportunity tonight to commend you for all the hard work, for having a caring heart, for loving people, and for saving that young man's life. It's because of you that young man had the opportunity to experience another Thanksgiving with his family. He's gonna have an opportunity to spend Christmas with his family. It's because of you and your dedication and your hard work and your love for people that he gonna get an opportunity to see year 2021. So I thank you for all that you do to make our county, our state, and our world a better place. Thank you so much.
I just want to say, uh, thank you. I've been doing this for about 30 years, working with veterans and first responders. I carry this little cross around my neck. His neck came off of the United States Marines in 1968. He was shot and killed in Vietnam. And as he was dying, he took it off and put it on his partner's leg. He told him he needed to get back to the United States. He brought it back in May 26, 1968. He brought this cross home as his partner died and he was gone in Vietnam. Uh, years ago, he was going through, and I worked with him. He came from Pennsylvania and gave you this old stained, uh, this old stained cross as appreciation that, you know, so this old cross means a lot. But I work with the veterans, and there's so many of them that they go through, you know, all kind of stuff. And I just thank God that God's put me in the right place at the right time. You know, somebody from the city made a comment, said, "Well, he just happens to put you in different places." Well, I just thank God he put me where he put me, when he put me there. And, and that's what it's all about. So, you know, I, I, I don't take credit. I just thank God that he gave me the heart to work with him and still work with him. And I thank the sheriff here that has, over the past eight years, I guess, that I've worked with him. And, uh, but I did get a call from the governor today, too. So I appreciate all that. But I thank you, each and every one of us here tonight. And just keep us in prayer because that's what we plan to do, just to keep on, especially helping our veterans, because PTSD is a terrible disease and, uh, that they go through. So I appreciate you tonight. And if you are a veteran in here, a first responder, that's why I do what I do. And I thank you from all my heart.
Thank you. Thank you, Chaplain Walden, and to all of you that are here tonight. I want to let you know something. I met this young man in 1996. And in the meeting of him in 1996, I was running for the office of sheriff in 1996. This young man's house was firebombed because he was supporting me. From that day forward, we developed a bond, and we have been close to one another since that time. And I thank him for that. And he see, and I see beyond the difference of our skin color. And that's one of the things I can say about Chaplain Walden and myself. One of the other things that Chaplain Walden failed to tell you is that in time of crisis there at the sheriff's office, especially with inmates, he is the person that deliver the good messages as well as the bad. And most of the time, we get bad messages being delivered. He's the person that will go down and tell that inmate, and pray with that inmate, and tell them about the loss of their loved one. And I thank him for that because with 600 inmates in, in the jail at one particular time, you know, it's just like a community. He was going day after day, letting someone know that a family member had gone on. I thank you for that. Wish we could give you something else more, but thanks to having your friendship and love. Thank you so much. God bless you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Pastor Walden. Thank you for all that you do. Um, thank you, Sheriff, also. Um, also, guys, um, we're getting ready to celebrate our 200-year in existence. We're super duper excited about that. We're getting ready to kick off our celebration. Um, I think this Saturday, December the 5th, if I'm not mistaken. Okay, there we go. Yeah, December the 5th, um, here at the courthouse. Is that correct? Um, we're going to unveil our new flag, our bicentennial flag. Um, I'm looking for Brian, who is not over here. That's all right. He went upstairs. Okay. But we're gonna also, um, we have a prop, I'm, we're gonna show you the flag in just a second. But we're also gonna do a proclamation as well. And I think we're gonna read the proclamation a little bit later on, on the agenda tonight. But we're gonna, um, go ahead and do the flag now. Um, so.
I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman. I had to ask Brian. Uh, he stepped out for a minute to go downstairs to get something. He's back. Thank you.
So we're gonna get him to.
Just what a graduate degree from Georgia will get you the ability to hold a flag.
So this is our, this is our bicentennial, uh, flag. Can y'all see it?
I'll let the chairman get in the photo. This is, uh, the flag that the Bicentennial Celebration Committee created. Uh, it'll be flying here, and we will work with the cities as well, um, and present them with the flag. It is just commemorate our 200-year. As you know, we founded, or we were chartered in 1821. And 2021 is 200 years. Uh, we will be marking the occasion throughout the year. We're gonna kick it off Saturday at 1 o'clock, uh, in front of, in front of this building. Uh, we'll kick it off. We'll have our flag out. We'll have a few little giveaways and goodies and just kind of get everybody excited as we are that this year marks a big milestone in Newton County. You see, we are, uh, we have two centuries behind us now, but we have one Newton ahead of us as we move forward into another 200 years and more of Newton County.
We also, we want to thank our, um, we have a team of people that is working really hard on putting these events together. So we want to thank everybody that's on that team that's working hard, uh, to make sure that, um, this be a successful year for the board. Um, also, guys, we're looking to, we wanted to make sure that we include everybody, um, from the sheriff's office to, um, the police office, to the municipalities that make up Newton County. Um, and we want to make sure we have a grand celebration, celebration for our community. So please be in prayer that, that all take place. Um, Mr. Kerr?
Thank you, Ms., excuse me. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, I'd like to start off by, um, recognizing Angela Mantle, who has been our Elections, um, Super, Director, um, with the county. She has decided, she's been working in elections for the last 17 years and has decided to, uh, take a position in the HR department that would allow her more time to spend at home with an ailing relative. And we just want to thank her for her, all of her service, and particularly these last couple of elections that we've had that have required quite a bit of, of, uh, extra effort and a lot of overtime and nights and weekends and so forth. So, um, and, uh, December the 4th will be her last day working in the Elections Office. And, um, they, the, um, Board of Elections is, is going to have a little reception for her on that day at 11 o'clock. Um, if anyone would like to just stop by and, and knows Angela, would like to say, wish her well. As a part of the, in, speaking about the elections, we wanted to, uh, notify everyone that there has been, uh, a number of additional sites that have been added as early voting sites, um, to, um, uh, so that it would make it easier for people. Uh, West, uh, excuse me, Mount Zion Baptist Church, uh, Library, St. Augustine Catholic Church. Um, I've got li, on this list here, the West Side Precinct. I don't know whether there was a, there or not, but, and we also have two drop boxes for people who may want to drop off their absentee ballots. And those are at the, um, West Side Precinct, um, as well as the Admin Building. And if you'll check the website, um, the website will list the early voting days. And those, uh, early voting actually starts, um, before Christmas. Uh, but for the dates and the times when the poll places will be open, if you'll consult the way, the website, um, they'll be able to, uh, tell you a little more about that. Um, also wanted to bring to everyone's attention a couple of ribbon cuttings that we're gonna be having during the month of December. Senior Services and Animal Services, the additions and new buildings there will be dedicated on December the 9th. Uh, Senior Services at 11 and Animal Services at 2. Certainly, we invite the public to come, uh, to those, to see those new facilities. Uh, we're certainly very proud of those facilities. And this is an opportunity to see your splosh dollars at work and see what we've done. And, uh, to see how much we've improved. Oh, thank you, Brian. I didn't realize, we had some slides there. To see how much that we've done with, um, with the, uh, with, uh, with that money that we obtained from the, um, from the splosh. You'll see there, Brian pulled up for us a, the early voting calendar. And you'll see it starts on the, looks like the 14th. And we'll go through the 31st. And you'll notice there, 8 to 5, um, except for Thursday, the 24th. And that will be 8 to noon, then, and then, of course, on Christmas Day, there's no voting. Christmas Day or that, or Sunday, yeah, or the Monday after. And then 8 to 6 on the 29th and 30th. The 31st will be New Year's Eve, and that's, of course, only half a day that day. And then January 1st, there'll be no early voting. And the runoff will be then January 5th. Thank you, Brian. And then, um, I would also, um, like to say that Fire Station 2, there'll be a ribbon cutting there. I think that was just scheduled today on December the 11th at 11 o'clock. Fire Station 2 is, is located on Highway 162 near, uh, Rocky Plains Road. Um, it was a previously existing volunteer station that we've gone in and remodeled and made, uh, operational for a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week station. Um, so we've added, um, uh, living space and bunks and so forth, uh, for the firefighters. So it can be manned 24 hours. And that'll be, um, again, December 11th at 11 o'clock. Also, uh, we haven't scheduled these yet, but we, um, some more splosh dollar, uh, projects, uh, around about at Jack Neely and Kirkland, and then improvements at, uh, Crowell Road and Harold Dobbs, uh, those intersections. And, uh, we will be having a, um, a groundbreaking ceremony, uh, um, before the end of the month, and we have yet, we will be scheduling that. So you should see some signs going up, and, uh, then we'll have a, we'll have that, um, have that done as well. And we are, um, uh, as you was mentioned earlier, the West Side Youth Facility, um, we are working and very, 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 very close to getting that location solid, solidified. And, um, uh, we anticipate being able to have a, uh, little, um, to be able to put up a sign and have a, uh, groundbreaking ceremony there during the month of December as well. I know that's one of, uh, Commissioner Schultz's projects that she holds very near and dear. And so we obviously would like to try to get that done, and we're working very hard to get that, make that happen. Um, and it'll be a real benefit to all of the citizens, particularly their kids on that side of the county, west side of the county, so. Um, and with that, um, I will close. Thank you. And Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Do I have a question? Um, I think the turnaround on Jack Neely and, uh, can't think, was it, uh, was it Jack Neely and Kirkland? I'm sorry. Thank you. I think a portion that is in District 4, and I, I haven't been abreast as far as the plans as for that particular initiative, since it's kind of involve, uh, more than just, you know, and I hate to say districts, but it involves more than just one district. And I would like somebody to be able to take the time out to kind of show me those planes if I could, if they could. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, hey, 7:31, actually. Um, 7:33 now. Um, it's time for our, uh, public hearing. Uh, Ms. Judy is filling in for Ms. Jackie tonight. So we're gonna ask Ms. Shayna Applewhite, if she would. Ms. Tracy Han, Hernandez. Yeah, I'm sorry. Hey, Ms. Tracy?
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. We have one soning case before you tonight, and it's a conditional use permit. It's case number CUP 20-000005. The proposed use is a child daycare center. It's located at 141 Highway 142. It's, it's existing soning. It's AR Agricultural Residential. It's located in District 1 in the Alcove River Watershed. Uh, Mount Parcel 99-012. It's 18.37 acres owned by Covington Christian Church, and the petitioner is Lisa Maderas. The applicant's intent is to operate a child daycare center in an existing place of worship. It's, uh, subject site is located at 141 Highway 142, soned AR, and currently is developed with a place of worship Covington Christian Church. Here's an aerial view of the property, which is located, uh, south of the US Highway 278 at the new roundabout. It's a soning map showing the AR soning, located in the Alcove River Watershed. Our Commissioner District map showing the location of District 1. This is the concept plan that was submitted by the applicant. They're gonna be using two, possibly three rooms within the church. Conclusion: Given that this property has been historically used for institutional uses, including the place of worship, staff recommends approval for this cut in accordance with Section 510-480C4. Recommended conditions: Should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit to operate a child daycare center in an existing place of worship, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One: They must obtain a break-from-the-start state license before the issuance. before the issuance of the business license. Two, approval from the fire marshal must be obtained. Three, approval is for no more than sixty children. And four, the hours of operation will be from seven AM to seven PM. The applicant is here tonight. If you have any questions, do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Commissioner, any questions? Thank you so much. We're going to now open it up for those that want to speak, for the applicant and those that want to speak in favor. You have ten minutes to do so tonight. If you would, please come and state your name, your address for the record, please. The applicant and those that want to speak in favor.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lisa Maderas, and I've been in the education field for eighteen years. And I recognize there is a need for students to have more after-school learning. Living Grace is a five oh one C three nonprofit childcare organization that would like to offer a program that will give parents the option for after-school learning that celebrates the uniqueness of every child while providing care that promotes positive change, knowledge, and growth for our community and the families we serve. And I would like to thank you for your consideration and approving this request.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Thank you so much, ma'am. That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that want to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Anyone wants to oppose tonight? Thank you. That portion of our public hearing is closed. I think this is in District One. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit, CUP two zero dash zero 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 five, with recommended conditions.
Thank you, sir. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. End of discussion. All in favor? It passes five to zero. Thank you so much. Next thing is on our consent agenda. I seek a motion that we approve our consent agenda, please.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Mason.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. It's been, thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner Henderson. End of discussion. All in favor? It passed five to zero. Thank you. I'm sorry. Let me, let me pull, let me call that vote again. All in favor? All opposed? It passed four to one. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number nine. Water Resources. Requesting approval of resolution R one two zero one two zero and associated contract documented to update project completion date on a loan amount of the Jifa loan. Mr. Kerr.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This resolution is to amend the agreement that we had with Jifa to extend the repayment to May first, twenty twenty-three, and also to increase the loan amount by one point, by one million nine hundred three thousand to twenty-five million one hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. You actually did consider a similar resolution. I believe it was back in September. But there was some language that needed to be added to that, and that's why you are, are seeing this again. And this, the language was per Jifa that they wanted some additional verbiage added to this, added to this particular resolution. So that's, if you, if you recall seeing it, that's, we did do, haven't, we did take an action on it, but we needed to add some verbiage to it.
Thank you, sir.
It was the same numbers and all, but it was just some verbiage.
We're going to get it opened up for discussion. I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Cowan.
I make a motion to approve Resolution R one two zero one two zero to modify the Jifa loan.
Can I get a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Cowan and second by Commissioner Schultz. End of discussion. All right. Commissioner Schultz.
So Lloyd, do you remember exactly what language had to be changed?
I'm sorry, I don't. And James Brown was scheduled to be here tonight to address that. Unfortunately, he had a family emergency and was not able to come at the last minute. I believe, I believe that it had to do with the dollar amount being, the dollar amount being included on there as well as with some of the reference. I don't think that the original one had the original amount of the loan, which you'll see there was listed at the top. And then the, as long, as well as some of the other information that's in that opening paragraph. But I don't know the specific, the exact language. So if you need to, if we need to delay this until we can get that exact language, then certainly we can do that. But I'm sorry, I do not know what needed to be amended to that.
Is this time sensitive?
I don't believe that it is. We need to get it back to them just as quickly as possible. But I don't believe that it's time sensitive.
Because the next time you're going to be able to have a meeting will be January.
It's going to be January fifth.
So is it?
I don't see anything in here that requires that we would get, need to get it back to Jifa before the end of the year. So I don't believe that there's going to be, would be a penalty if we did not get it back by the end of the year.
Well, the other thing that's problematic to me is that there is a big red stamp in the middle of my document, and so I can't read it all.
Uh, yeah, there was a.
I don't know what, what it says under that big red stamp.
Yeah, that actually was a, there was a sticky note that was put on there and it got copied. And I don't have the original, but I could, yeah, well, I'm not going to be able to pull it up on my phone. I don't have the original to see what it, to see what it says. I think it says the Drinking, Drinking Water Revolving Fund, administered by the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority. That's what it, the words that are missing are drinking, are the remainder of the drinking and water and revolving fund, revolving, beginning of revolving, administered by Georgia Environmental and then Finance Authority. I believe those are the missing words there.
I got a Commissioner has asked to table it. I don't know if you're making that in the form of a motion?
Would it be in the form of substitute motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, substitute motion. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we table this agenda item until the January fifth meeting.
Thank you. It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards that we table this until January the fifth. And second by Commissioner Henderson. End of discussion. All in favor? It's tabled until first meeting in January. Thank you, Mr. Kerr. Uh, next, Finance. A resolution R one two zero one two zero eight. A resolution of the Newton County Board of Commissioners approving an appropriation for Rainbow Community Center an amount of sixty thousand dollars. Mr. Kerr?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you. You will recall that back several months ago, there was a tornado that came through town and damaged the homeless shelter. And the city of Covington and the, and Newton County agreed to help the homeless shelter with some, funding some of the repairs. Both the city and the county agreed to fund thirty thousand, that we've contributed thirty thousand dollars. The city gave us their thirty thousand dollars, and so that's combined with our thirty thousand dollars. And so this resolution is to appropriate that sixty thousand dollars to the Rainbow Community Center for those repairs.
So we already approved it. We're just doing a, getting a resolution for it. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Seeking motion, please. It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason. End of discussion. Commissioner Schultz.
Lloyd, I'm looking at the resolution. So we really should be making the motion based on the resolution one two zero one two zero, correct? That's the resolution for this.
A.
I don't see an A on mine. So my question is, in reading the resolution, it doesn't say that the city has donated that money. Where, should that not be recorded in the resolution? Because at this point, it just looks like that's, we don't see that additional money. I would think that that needed to be included in the resolution.
The city has already deposited funds with us. Uh, I don't know whether it would.
Yeah, we could just add it as language.
Just add it as a whereas.
As far as, yeah, I mean, we could add that as a, as a, as a whereas. I'm going to have to defer to, is that to our county attorney? If that's, we're able to do, if that's appropriate to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I just think as long as it's memorialized as a whereas in the doc, in the resolution, we're good.
If you will state that, I think, um, I think Commissioner Henderson wants to state that. Yeah.
Yes.
Changes added. It's meant by the county attorney.
Okay, on this resolution, I want to read it in its entirety so you make sure that you're comfortable with what language I drafted. So, whereas the Constitution of the State of Georgia, approved by the voters of the state in November of nineteen eighty-two and effective July one, nineteen eighty-three, provides in Article Nine, Section Two, Paragraph One thereof, that the governing authority of the county may adopt clearly reasonable ordinances, resolutions, and regulations. And whereas Newton County, like all other county municipal governments in Georgia, is limited by the state constitution and the Georgia Code and how public funds can be used. One of the principal restrictions is the gratuities clause of the Georgia Constitution. And whereas there is no gratuity or violation of the gratuities clause when Newton County receives a countywide substantial benefit in exchange for a budget appropriation. And whereas OCGA Section forty-eight dash five dash two two zero provides that county taxes may be levied and collected to support indigent individuals. And whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners recognizes the substantial benefit of working with community partners and the worthy causes they pursue that are highly beneficial to the citizens of Newton County. And whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners finds that the Rainbow Community Center, by providing food and shelter for the homeless population in Newton County, confers countywide substantial benefit to the citizens of Newton County. And whereas the Rainbow Community Center was a victim of recent tornado damage. And whereas the city of Covington has also provided financial assistance in this matter. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Newton County, Georgia as follows. The Newton County Board of Commissioners finds that the following entity services confer a substantial benefit to Newton County citizens. The Rainbow Community Center, a domestic nonprofit corporation. Two, the Newton County Board of Commissioners hereby approves an appropriation in the amount of sixty thousand dollars to the aforementioned entity, providing community-wide services to the citizens of Newton County. The appropriation shall be used as needed to address the recent tornado damage. And that is, that completes that resolution.
Uh, Commissioner Schultz.
Okay, I'm going to be a little picky here. On your whereas, whereas the city of Covington has provided substantial contribution, is that what you said? No, I just think that, is it appropriate to say that they've provided thirty thousand dollars towards this amount? I mean, isn't that what they've donated?
Yes, sir. It's thirty thousand.
Yeah, I mean, I just think that we need to be specific and say that it, that they've donated thirty thousand dollars to Newton County for this contribut, for this appropriation.
Whereas the city of Covington has agreed to pay to the county thirty thousand dollars to be utilized in rehabilitating the Rainbow Community Center.
I think that's good.
Do you like that? Okay. And we'll make that our last whereas paragraph. So you will be looking for a motion to approve Resolution Number R one two zero one two zero, letter A, with the amendments as stated by the county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So moved as stated by the county attorney. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Who's second? Motion, it's motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Cowan. End of discussion. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So two months ago, what, what did we vote on two months ago?
I, I think we, we didn't, we actually, we voted on it, but we didn't have a resolution behind it. And so we need a resolution to make sure that it was put in the minutes.
Okay, so, so the resolution is going to memorialize what we voted on two months ago? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. End of more, end of more discussion. All in favor? It passed five to zero. Thank you. Discussion consideration of ordinance one two zero one two zero and ordinance amending, amending chapter sixteen, Article Two of the Code of Ordinances of Newton County, Georgia, to revise Section sixteen dash twenty concerning a retirement supplement for the, for superior court judges to adopt a Section sixteen dash twenty-one concerning a survival supplement for the deceased superior court judges to repair conflicting ordinance to provide an effective date and for other purpose. Mr. Kerr?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular ordinance allows for the surviving spouse of a superior court judge to receive a death benefit. And there's a calculation based on the amount of the retirement supplement that they would receive from the county. And the amount would be, I believe it's fifty percent of the, fifty percent of the supplement, the retirement supplement that would be received had the, the judge lived to, to collect the supplement. And so this, this would set forth then from here on out that the superior court judges would receive, or their spouses would receive, or their spouses would receive that death benefit.
Thank you, sir. Um, I seek a motion, please. Um, Commissioner Schultz?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Move for approval of ordinance one, two, zero, one, two, zero.
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any, uh, discussion? Commissioner Cowan?
Lloyd, is that gonna be a, an annuity that's purchased by the county, or is that gonna be paid directly out of county, um, general fund?
I'll have to, I'll get an answer for you, Commissioner, but I believe it would be, um, a, a monthly dispersal to the spouse.
Do we have a retirement account set up?
Our finance director is here. I'm sorry. Okay.
So it's gonna be a monthly transfer to this account and then a payout?
Should be, yes, but I'll let-
Would it be better to research a, an annuity? Pay this out? Megan, what do you think? Ms. Martin, what's your, what's your thoughts on that?
I apologize, I was just answering a question from the chairman.
The question would be a payout monthly transfer from general fund to a retirement account, and then a pay, payment directly to the surviving spouse? Or would it be better for the county to purchase an annuity?
That's really an insurance question, as far as, like, what would, more bang for the buck would be as far as putting those county dollars to their best use. But I just, I don't know that right off the bat, I'd have to-
Should we explore that option first, before we just go ahead and, I mean, I, I understand what, what we're trying to do. But I'm, I'm not sure the mechanism that we're setting up is the right way to do it. It's just a thought.
I mean, we certainly could. The-
We need to talk to an insurance person, uh, I think. Just to find out what the best, uh, uh, best option for that benefit would be.
Yeah, we, we certainly can.
I would. I would recommend that, uh, that you table this until you get a chance to talk to an insurance agent. It may be that what we're setting up is correct, is the right way, but I'd least rather, I'd rather get the liability as far away from the county as possible and put it into an account.
Well, if the judge had survived, um, I mean, currently what we do, uh, if the judge had survived, that person, he or she would be receiving the, um-
So right now, Lloyd?
The portion of the supplement, I mean, it would been, they wouldn't, they would not have gone, it would not have gone into an annuity. They simply would receive, um, uh, they simply would receive that, that portion, um, as part of their, uh, part of their retirement benefit. I mean, as part of their payment every month for, um, uh, uh, out of that retirement program.
And that's what we're doing for, uh, Judge Ellis, is that correct?
Yeah, Judge Ellis gets a, uh, gets a cash payment-
Yeah.
Monthly.
Yeah.
So does, there's another judge too, I believe.
Not a death benefit.
We issue a check to Judge Ellis.
Out. I mean, I just, uh-
I mean, we can, we can do that, certainly if it's the boards.
I, I would just take a few weeks and discuss it with a insurance expert or a pension person, uh, that's, uh, can give you the best option on this, uh, as opposed to creating a liability that, you know, we, I don't know if we'll be able to handle it or whatever. I mean, you might be able to do it paying a lesser amount by purchasing an annuity. Um, and ACCG, I think, has a, um, post-employment benefits group. They have something like that, Megan? It may be worthwhile to look, explore their options. Uh, just, I, look, it's just, my background's been in HR for years and those benefits and everything. I think we're, I'm not sure what we're setting up is gonna be the right way to do it. Yeah. So I, I do, I would just ask y'all to consider-
Sure.
Okay.
Referring this until a while.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Schultz, then, um, Commissioner Edwards and then Commissioner, uh, Henderson. But first of all, let me, let me, let me do something real quick. Sir, we're not ignoring, ignoring you, uh, but you can make comments at the end of the meeting, uh, in comments, okay? All right. Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
Um, so Lloyd, I just need to understand, um, currently, it, if, if judge, if a judge leaves office, then they are entitled to a retirement supplement that is paid for by the county. Is that correct? And there's no, they, they don't have to necessarily be there a certain number of terms, it's just, once a judge and they leave office, they are paid a retire, they're paid a supplement?
That is my understanding, yes.
So they could serve one term and then receive a supplement for the rest of their life? Is that correct?
That's my understanding, but I'd have to verify that.
And so, this is just allowing-
The spouse to get it.
The spouse to receive that. So it seems to me that the real issue is not just in the death panel, uh, death, death benefit of the surviving spouse, but is in, what is the policy of, of providing a judge that long-term supplement? Because if we're gonna do that for every judge, that, that's a, that's a big financial commitment for a long period of time. And so I do think that that's something that we need to be real clear on. What, what is the policy in terms of Newton County supplement? Because I think the state pays that retirement regardless, but is Newton County supplementing that retirement from the state, or everybody that's ever serves as a judge?
And that, that would be my question, too. Would you, would you set aside a, a certain amount of money to purchase annuities for other instances that you may have to have a retirement supplement paid out? Um, 'cause it's one of those things that I don't think the Board of Commissioners wants to deal with every single time it comes up. 'Cause then you run into a situation where you might do something different, or the supplement's increased, or I, I, you know, just a lot of things can happen with employee benefits, and I really don't wanna Megan to get involved in a lawsuit about employee benefits. So, I, I would just ask y'all to look at it and then, and then get somebody that's skilled in pensions or retirements or, um, insurance to do it. It may be a better way to do it than what we're crafting right now. But I could be wrong, I mean, it, it won't hurt us to wait.
Thank you, sir. But, uh, got Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, essentially what we're doing is that we're, we're extending a retired judge's retiree benefit from the county. We're just extending it, um, to his spouse. So, um, understanding, I guess, understanding the future value of that money now, um, and, and, and understanding that we, we have got to generate that money somehow, uh, and budget for that money in the future, a larger amount of money for a longer period of time, it looks like. So, uh, I, I would not have a problem with tabling this and, and seeking some, some financial advice, and maybe Brittany's, may, maybe she's got that knowledge that we're looking for anyway, so, just my opinion. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I think it's a great idea, and I think that, uh, uh, we should, uh, look at approving it, you know, maybe there are some specifics that the, uh, I mean, the board as a whole may, may want. But just another question I asked, if a regular employee, uh, were to pass, do we give a supplement to his spouse? I mean, you know, so... Okay, so, I mean, I, I, I guess the question was, if a regular employee, and we're talking about our county employees, if he or she was to pass, would we give a supplement of sort to this? I'm not saying we not, don't wanna do it, but I'm saying I believe that there's something that we should look at for all our employees. I mean, so, um- 'Cause I think, I mean, to me, it may not matter, I mean, it may not meet the mercy of anybody else, I-
With-
I think there, there will be a financial need for any person, or any, any, anybody in our family who would, uh, pass, you know, unexpectedly, and then they have a spouse and a children, et cetera. You know?
Well, all of our, we, we do have a few people left in a pension plan, and, but most of all of our employees, I mean, everybody's enrolled in the four oh one or the four fifty-seven plan, and you identify your beneficiaries in the case of your death. And so those people, the beneficiaries of the program, uh, would then receive whatever benefit that you have, however, whatever the amount of that is. So there's no further payment, once you leave the county or retire, for instance, if I were, you know, once I retire, there'll be no further payment from the county to me, um, whatever, um, yeah, uh, uh, outside of, um, whatever was, whatever was built up in my account, then I would get that. But that doesn't come directly from the, from the county, that comes from the investment group that was hanging on there.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, I'm just gonna say this and then we can move on, but I, I know, but I don't know what the city government has changed, if, if, uh, if, if you invested, or if you have, uh, put money in, uh, four oh one, and if you want, I mean, if you wanted to in retirement, you could take a little less and have your spouse covered until she passes, or you could take a little bit more and have your spouse covered maybe a year, two, or three years, whatever, you know, your need may be. This is the only thing what I'm saying. I'm saying is that I think we, we should do more for our employees, especially our first, first responders too as well. I think we're trying to do a little bit more, uh, Chairman, but I think we still, we need to do more.
I got the money, and I got Commissioner Mason, and I got Commissioner Schultz next, but I'm gonna, um, give, I wanna ask, um, our attorney to give us the numbers, what we are, uh, talking about here. So we'll know what we, what we, what we talking about.
Okay, so we're, all right, there's actually two main issues going on in this particular item. The first is an amended, amended that, it's, sorry, getting my tongue tied, an amendment regarding the manner in which the county pays a retired supplement to retired judges. Currently, the formula requires you to know the amount the state pays out in benefits with respect to each retired judge, which does vary significantly and is administratively burdensome to identify. For any judges who retire on or after January one, twenty twenty-one, the supplement will simply be two-thirds of the supplement paid to active judges. The county pays fifteen hundred dollars per month as a supplement to active judges. So this translates to one thousand per month in retirement, or twelve thousand dollars per year. The, the other part of this that we're speaking about is the survivor benefit. The ordinance is modified to add a survivor supplement in the amount of half the supplement paid to the active judges. This translates to seven hundred and fifty dollars per month, or nine thousand dollars per year.
Right. I'm sorry. Um, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess this might be a question for Lloyd, if you know the answer to it. Do, because I think Chairman Baines, you said it's a current judge that's already getting this supplement?
Well, he's getting his, he, he's getting some of his retirement, is that correct, Lloyd?
If, if, if the judge retires, then he would get, as, as Megan just said, if the judge retires, he gets a thousand dollars a month as a supplement.
Okay, so-
To do his retirement from the county.
Correct. So with that being said, is this retirement funding source from the general fund of the county?
Yes.
Or it's from an insurance policy that's been set up through the county?
It, it's from the general fund. Uh, but Amanda, our HR director's here, Amanda, can you come up, please, in case there's anything we need that you could add to this conversation?
So I think it's only-
But it, it's funded by the general, by the general fund. Um, and I think we have currently two, two judges, is that right? Okay.
They get a percentage of the supplement that they get every year, and it's paid by the general fund. So we include that amount, amount each year in the budget.
So this amount is already included in our budget every single year anyway?
Yes.
For all of our current judges?
No, no. The ones that we know who are retired, the amount is, it's not a big amount. Um, so the ones that we know who are retiring, and it's not, it's senior judges. So it's not particularly all of the judges.
Right. So the judges that we're talking about tonight would be, um, um, I think Judge Howard Johnson and, um, Judge Thoreau, is that correct? Yeah. So that's who we're talking about tonight.
To give this fifty percent of the supplement to their spouses?
Fifty percent of the debt, of the benefit, which would be fifty percent of the thousand dollars, which is five hundred dollars- -to their spouse.
Okay.
So it, it simply is, we're, instead of paying a thousand dollars, we would have been paying a thousand dollars to Judge Johnson, we would now be paying five hundred dollars to his spouse.
And that's what y'all want to table? Uh, Commissioner Schultz, I'm sorry.
So, um, Judge, um, Osborn retired last year. So are we paying him a supplement?
Yes.
Okay, so we're paying a, a, a living judge a supplement after they retire.
Correct.
So this is just to extend that supplement to the surviving spouse?
Right.
And all judges who retire get this sub-
They're senior judges, and that's determined by the state. So the state has a certain formula and cri, criteria. And so if they're senior judges, then they get a retirement from the state, and we as a county have to also provide them with a retirement, which is a percentage of the supplement that they already, that they're receiving from us.
Any more questions? Um, I seek a motion. It was three, two? Okay. It was, okay, it was motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. All right, any more discussion? Yeah. That- My motion stands, my, my motion stands, right? There's no one second, the, the, uh, substitute motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could for clarification, are you talking about looking at an annuity program for all of the judges, uh, all of the retirement supplements, or just for the ones on the death benefit? Because right now, we, we're talking about two judges. So- Okay. Okay.
Okay, I got Commissioner Henderson being Commissioner Mason.
So, so I guess my, a next question is, would this pro- prolong the, the spouse from receiving the benefit?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, if you're looking at, you said two people, possibly, two people, then you're talking about, you know, maybe a thousand dollars. And I think that if, if they could go ahead and we, we could approve it, then maybe our HR and our county attorney, maybe collectively or together, come up with something similar to what, what Commissioner Cowan is talking about. But I think right now, we need to just go ahead and prove this, and so they can start receiving that benefit. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Mason?
I, I was just wanting to echo what Commissioner Henderson said, because that's exactly what I was gonna say. If we just go ahead and approve this tonight, and then going forward, if that's something we want to look into, um, to see what is gonna be our best benefit going forward in long term, like when we have more retiring judges or more judges that may pass, and we may have to have this same situation, um, to see if something different will be a better situation for us. So I, I was gonna say the exact same thing, if we just approve this and then look at future, what we can do if we want to make some changes.
Okay. Thank you, sir. It failed, your motion failed. Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
You want me to put in, do you want me to amend my motion to where we, um, approve it, um, with, um, exploring future options of how to fund future death benefits? Okay, is that, is that a? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so, that's how I'm going to amend my motion. Right, but we will, um, we will look at additional options for, um, funding future death benefits.
Thank you. It's been motion, thank y'all for not making me veto that. Thank you, um, it's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner, um, Mason. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, our monthly fin- financials. Ms. Brittany White.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight I will be presenting the October twenty twenty financials. This is the fourth month of our fiscal year, so we, um, four months into the year, we should be looking to trend roughly around thirty three percent. Our general fund revenues for the year totaled twenty four point four million dollars, which is thirty two point nine percent of our actual to budget, so we're trending really closely to where we should be right now with our revenues for the year. This bar graph depicts where our revenues are each month for this year, and as you can see, October is progressively larger, which is when our, um, property taxes start flowing in. Our general fund expenditures for the year have been twenty three million, which is thirty percent, thirty point nine five percent, which we're trending a little lower than the thirty three percent, um, is where we should be looking at, looking to be right now. Our general fund expenditures for the year, October, do appear to be a little higher. October is a three payroll, um, period month, so that's to be expected when we have, there's two months out of our fiscal year that we always have three payrolls, and October happens to be one of those. Our general fund revenues versus expenditures for the year, right now, we're, um, one point four million over revenues and expenditures for the year. Our three enterprise funds, this year, our revenue for the water fund year to date is three point four million. Our expenses year to date is one point seven million, so right now, we're looking at roughly a million dollar net income. Our solid waste fund, our revenues for the year have been three point two million, which is fifty three percent. Our year to date expenses is one point six, and they're trending at thirty nine percent right now. That does, um, that number is a little high, fifty three percent revenues, but we do remember that our, um, hang tag sales coming mostly in July, so that is to be expected as well. And our Gaither Fund, we're at one hundred and twenty five thousand in revenue for the year, which is thirty four percent, and our expenditures are at ninety four thousand for the year, twenty percent. So so far this year, all of our enterprise funds are operating in the black. We still have three SPOSS funds that are open, and our two thousand five SPOSS is, um, getting really close to finally being drawn down. We have about one, one point, like, one payment plus a little bit of another payment left of our O six COP SPON. And we'll be making one of those payments this month in December, and then we should have one more, um, six months from then, and we'll be able to close our two thousand five SPOSS out. Our two thousand eleven SPOSS, we're pretty much wrapped up on that as well, there's one point one million left in our two thousand eleven SPOSS. The only open projects are Fire Station Eight, which is being, um, is in the process of being constructed right now, and also the historic jail. Our two thousand seventeen SPOSS, we do have currently eight point eight million dollars available in that fund. And we do have several projects going on right now, which are bonded projects, so therefore, we are able to complete them before they are fully collected. Our revenues for, um, September were one point three million in our SPOSS fund, and that puts us projections over nine point two, what projections were, so nine point two million. So we are coming in really strong with our SPOSS revenues. In our impact fee fund, we currently have two point five million dollars in our impact fee fund, and we did have fourteen thousand dollars in expenses, um, for the cricket frog trail, is that what we're doing? For the cricket frog trail, so we have started, um, having some expenditures in our impact fee fund as well. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you. Any question, guys? Any question, guys?
Mister. Brittany, did, did, and I'm sorry, I, I was looking at something else on the agenda. Did you go over the collections, the lost and SPOSS collection for, um, the percentage increase over last year? Do you have that slide? Or do you have that graph with you?
I do not, but I can.
I think the board would be interested in knowing that.
I can. So I'll start putting, I do a, um, graph for our lost and SPOSS collections every month, so I'll start putting that in my financials as well. But this past month, we were trending roughly around twelve point nine percent over last year's SPOSS collections for, let's see, the ones we just got this month would have been October's collections, so our October collections were trending twelve point nine percent over two thousand nineteen October collections.
Thank you so much. Any questions, guys, before Brittany step down? Thank you so much, Brittany.
Thank you.
Oh, no, you got the next one too, right, I'm sorry. Number thirteen.
Tonight I have seven budget transfers on the agenda for you, and I have numbered them, so I will go in order. And I'll stop after everyone if you have any questions. The first, um, budget transfer tonight is a budget transfer to move seventy five thousand dollars into a bicentennial fund for the bicentennial celebration. This was, um, inadvertently left off the budget this year, so we are choosing to move that money from our lost collections, and I had mentioned in our last board meeting that we had, that the state had done a large audit to own a large corporation, and we don't know who it is, because they wouldn't disclose those details. But it did return five hundred and ninety nine thousand dollars of audited money that was originally coded to state sales tax back to the county. So, um, proposing that we utilize seventy five thousand of that audited money to fund the bicentennial celebration. Does anybody have any questions? I will also add that our lost collections are trending nineteen percent over what we had actually budgeted this year. We did budget conservatively, because during the budget process, there was a lot of uncertainties due to COVID, and we had no idea what our sales tax collection was gonna be. But they've been coming in really strong, about nineteen percent over what we budgeted.
Wow, that's awesome.
The second one is to fund the pandemic incentive, that was in the, um, I believe that was in the consent agenda. So that's going to cost us roughly two hundred and twenty five thousand, so we will also be pulling that from the lost collections as well. Does anybody have any questions about that one? The third one is the budget transfer for the Rainbow Community Shelter appropriation that we did. You've already approved it in the meeting, you had mentioned approving it, um, from contingencies. So this is just a formal budget transfer to move it from contingency. And also, at the beginning of the year, we also did appropriation for the Almond J. Turner Foundation. That was not a budgeted amount, so I just picked up that appropriation as well for nine thousand. So we'll be moving thirty nine thousand from our contingencies and moving that into our other appropriations line. Does anybody have any questions about that? Number four is a budget amendment for the contingency positions that we've hired so far for this fiscal year. Behind that is a breakdown of the positions that have been filled. There's also a column to the, the far right, that's our current year to date savings. So I have calculated savings on positions that we had budgeted to bring in earlier in the year that have not been filled yet. So so far, year to date, the positions filled has been four hundred and sixty two thousand. And we're also, we've got a hundred and seventy thousand in savings in that line. Does anybody have any questions about that one? Um, it's four hundred and sixty two thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars. Number five, yes ma'am?
Commissioner Schultz?
So I need to understand this personnel, um, the, only the ca- the column that says date filled, those are the only ones where, that we're referencing, is that correct?
I have highlighted those in green and also put a date that they were filled. So some of them, um, for instance, let's see, like, the one for the custodian, we needed it a little earlier than we anticipated. So we brought that one in in October, even though we anticipated to bring it in in January. But we're trying to, we're utilizing some of the savings and some of the other columns for positions that have not been filled, that were scheduled to be filled in July.
So these items that are under, let's just say, um, the ones that are, were supposed to be the proposed hire date of July twenty, and they're marked in purple?
Mm-hmm.
Um, are they still being advertised, or do you know?
I would have to let HR answer that question.
Because we've got several that, um, are in this purple highlighting.
That highlight color is actually positions, if you remember during the budget cycle, we had talked about, there were some positions we were carrying forward. So the ones that are highlighted in that color actually carry forward from FY twenty's budget.
But they're still, we're still trying to.
But they're still unfilled.
Still, they're unfilled?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Budget amendment number five is for the, um, survivor su- supplement that was just discussed. So we will be utilizing nine thousand dollars from our cash reserves for the year, our fiscal year changes. Um, so that will bring nine thousand from there, and that will put that into the Superior Court Judges Retirement Contribution Line Item, which is currently where all of the active retired judges' salaries or supplements are paid from. Does anybody have any questions about that one? Number six is a budget transfer to recognize our CARES Act funding for FY twenty one. We did get, um, four point eight in CARES Act funding, but out of the four point eight, one point three is actually the amount that we utilize FY twenty one expenses for. So this is just a budget amendment to offset, um, the revenues that we receive from the CARES Act funding to, because when we reported the CARES Act funding, we moved it all into a project. So we're just allocating the revenue and the expenses into this CARES Act funding project, which is how we need to account for it during our audit. Does anybody have any questions about that one?
Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, what we got, full part of what, from CARES Act?
Roughly four point eight.
Okay, and so, have all that money been used, or where did it go? Where, I mean, where has it been, what has it been spent for?
It was used to offset public safety salaries.
Okay, so, the, uh, possible, um, hazard, hazard pay. And I'm asking, I mean, maybe somebody, you know, so they're gonna, they're gonna get a certain amount of money for that. I had, I had heard it would be six hundred dollars, but it's supposed to go for most of every employee.
The pandemic incentive is a three hundred dollar incentive, and that is budgeted to go to all employees um, that were hired in March, and then it's prorated from March. So if you were hired in April, you will not get the full, um, three hundred dollars.
Okay, okay, so the, um, is, what's the amount for the hazard pay first, I mean, guest first responders? So they would receive additional three hundred dollars, I mean, say possibly three hundred dollars, in addition, three hundred dollars.
So, so he's asking about, he's asking about the Christmas bonus and the hazard of spray, right, yeah.
Okay.
On that one, I'm kinda, work through this.
So the, um, the Christmas bonus or the holiday incentive was a budgeted item. So that three hundred dollars was on the last paycheck, the one that, from the twenty seventh, and then this one would be on this next paycheck. So it would be a total of six hundred, but they're for two separate things.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions about that one? And the last one, I'm gonna get, um, our EMA Director Jody Nolan to come up and talk about this one. But he is requesting a new position that was not funded in our contingency positions in FY twenty one. He does have savings in his budget to cover a majority of it. He still will need nine thousand four hundred and ninety five dollars, which I am proposing that we pull from the contingency for a new position, since we do currently have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars savings in that, that line item.
You may remember as we went into this budget year, that Ms. Schultz had mentioned the possibility of EMA needing a little bit more help, since we were moving into not only a new year, but a, a COVID event year. And this is the sole purpose that I'm asking for this budget increase, is so EMA can hire an additional personnel. I put out a request some months ago, and currently, my department has two full-time personnel and one part-time personnel, and we have really been inundated with this, uh, COVID nineteen situation since it began. We've been, uh, responsible for getting practically every, uh, employee tested in the beginning, providing personal protective equipment, assisting with, uh, staffing issues, believe it or not, at nursing homes, that's still ongoing, and the numbers are increasing even now as we speak. But we're moving into a second phase of this, which is gonna include vaccinations. I'm sure that a lot of you have heard about it in the news, but it's been a reality for us, because we've been attending telephone conferences and in-person meetings for about the past six months, associated with the vaccine, because that's truly the only thing that's gonna give us the herd immunity, as they call it. And since three vaccines have been produced and approved, theoretically, they will be approved by the FDA. When we start vaccine distribution, and I know this is kind of off of culture of why the request is put in, anywhere between, uh, five and twenty percent of our population is gonna want that vaccine. Well, a survey monkey was done recently, where a poll was sent out to find out how many people would truly be interested at this point, and it came back at thirty six percent. So figuring that, uh, initially, we did have three locations in Newton County set up as what's called open pods. Uh, we're strongly encouraging closed pods for distribution. That will be one of the responsibilities of this additional personnel. to encourage industry to, to submit closed pod applications for vaccine distribution. And, uh, definitely, we've already actually put the applications out because we got preliminary approval prior to this, uh, meeting, and that was been a couple of months ago. But, uh, this person will be, continue to be employed after the COVID situation, which is probably gonna go on for a few years to come, even after the vaccine's distributed. Because we have other things that, uh, we've actually needed additional personnel to do. Uh, preliminary damage assessment, we've, if you go back and look at Newton County's history, we've had multiple presidential declarations, uh, several more than a lot of our surrounding counties. Uh, we have, uh, not only preliminary damage assessment, but, uh, debris management plan that we need to put in place. We need to get an education out into the community about our early warning system. And, uh, and keeping in mind too, going back to the vaccine, uh, it's gonna be a two-dose vaccine. And those doses will be delivered up to three weeks apart. And that, that being delivered, they have to come from the same manufacturer each time. And they require, the vaccines currently require different refrigeration methods. And, uh, Newt County, of course, we can go into it and just kind of explaining this, the reason. Uh, we're gonna be responsible, or EMA's gonna be responsible for transporting those vaccines to our locations for distribution. And also, they're looking at us to try to provide local clinicians to inject the vaccines here in Newton County because of the staffing issues that are occurring at the state level, uh, when they begin the vaccine distribution. So hopefully, and presumptively, in the near future, we may be asking for another personnel that may be on a temporary basis. But that is the reason that I have made the request, and it is, it, uh, it's, it's a pretty dire situation. Uh, and, and if you haven't been keeping up with it, we have, uh, additional nursing facilities, uh, nursing homes in our county that are being inundated with sickness as we speak, and also assisted living facilities, and our, numbers are definitely going up again on hospitalizations and, uh, diagnosis of positives with, uh, significant complications. So it's not something that has went away. Um, I know it's not making as much news as it used to, but we're actually back up on an influx of positives. And, uh, hopefully, this vaccine can be distributed with the help of you guys. And I know it's a small drop in the bucket compared to some of the other things that's been approved tonight. I think as part of our celebrating two hundred years, we could potentially, you know, dump another person into, uh, EMA. If you want to go ahead and do that, along with this potential person that we're asking for. But, uh, that's why we're here, and I appreciate the opportunity to come up here and make this presentation and have it in for your consideration to protect the health and well-being of the citizens of Newton County.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, sir. Um, in accordance, Commissioner Henderson? Hey, come here, let me get more, let me get more, go ahead.
Um, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I just want to say Jody and I did have a, at-length discussion on this. Um, and I would agree, and I do support the request, uh, for the additional personnel because we are seeing an upsurge. There are some other things too, in terms of facilities and, uh, equipment, that I think we are most likely gonna need. But at this point, what we'd like to do is, at the very least, add, um, this additional person. We have some savings in the department because some, uh, because of the, um, excuse me, because of FEMA and also because of the CARES Act that we received money. So we would be able with very little expense to fund this position for the remainder of this year. Um, and we believe that we'll be able to do so for the following year. And we'll, this gives us an opportunity to, uh, catch up on a few things and to begin and continue making plans for what we think is going to be additional demands on EMA. Um, and then as we go along, we'll be able to make those adjustments as, you know, as needed. So, um, uh, but I, I do support and recommend that the board, uh, do approve this position.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. But first of all, thank, thank you, Ms. Nolan, for your tireless effort and work in the community. And, um, it is, you know, I think the nursing homes, assisted living homes are the ones, I kind of keep up with that because there's a lot of people that I know and I, and I love, I love everybody in assisted, uh, living that really needs help, need their vaccine, they need it, we need it a month ago, possibly two months ago. So what I would like for, for the board also, Lord, to consider is giving to this man, this man, a person, or moving over, however you want to do it, that you need, and also have the funding available as soon as you need another person, that you shouldn't have to come to the board and ask them. They should be available to help, uh, you know, counter distribute this vac- those vaccines throughout the community. And thirdly, this is my understanding that the temperature, the temperature of the vaccine has to be below zero or something.
Absolutely, one of the manufacturers, and I didn't mean to interrupt.
Just all right, go ahead.
But one of the vaccines that is currently produced and, and on the palette to be approved for the FDA has to be stored at ninety degrees below zero Fahrenheit, which requires almost submersion in, uh, a bath of liquid nitrogen. It's gonna be very difficult to manage. The other, uh, negative twenty-two degrees Fahrenheit can be kept in a, uh, basically, uh, a deep freezer. So hopefully, that will be one, that will be, be a, it requires some very special handling. And so even when it's being transported, it's gonna have to be refrigerated. So if we're bringing it down from the initial distribution location and from Lawrenceville, while it's being transported to Newton County, a generator and a freezer is gonna have to be in a truck to, to transfer those items from point A to point B.
So how do we keep it? I mean, what I'm saying, the vaccine, because, you know, it's gonna be, I think, gonna be more demanding thirty-six percent of the population. I think there's gonna be people running.
W- w- one of the things that, uh, Mr. Curry had mentioned was some additional items that would be required. And we do have a contingency plan for placement of some, uh, freezers. We've already made plans to install a couple of, of, uh, freezers that would be purchased for this contingency plan and a place to put those that's very close to the, uh, primary point of distribution.
Right, yeah, I'm just in closing. I'd rather be in front of the curve with this vaccine and, and the personnel that's needed than to be behind the curve. So you had to come to another meeting and wait and wait. We want, I like to be in, in front of the curve with it, and give you what you need, and we need to give you what you need now.
Yes, sir, I agree, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? I seek a motion, please. Uh, Commissioner Schultz?
Um, we're making a motion for all of the budget transfers. So we're just making one motion for all of the transfers.
Yep.
Then I would move to accept all of the transfers as presented by, um, finance.
It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Edwards. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Guys, thank you, thank you so much, um, uh, for, for making that, those transfers. Also, thank you again for, um, helping Mr. Nolan out with his, his issue of needing a, um, employee. I'm gonna tell you, I talk to Mr. Nolan sometimes at twelve o'clock at night, and he'd be out there working in the fields, trying to make sure people are safe, so, thank you. Next is item number fourteen, discussion and consideration of amendment to the Snapping Shoals fiber contract. Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, you should have on your desk in front of you, uh, the copy of the First Amendment to the Fiber Cable Agreement. Um, what this, we entered into an agreement with Snapping Shoals EMC several years ago to provide fiber service in support of our nine-one-one system. And this amendment adds nine, uh, drop points, what are called drop points, to the, um, to that, uh, agreement. Uh, as part of our nine-one-one, uh, upgrade, uh, update project, um, we are building three towers, and then we are adding fiber and, with fiber connection. And then we're adding, uh, fiber to six additional, uh, places, or, uh, towers. So this agreement spells out what that monthly lease fee will be, as well as monthly charge, or, uh, charges for additional services that would, might, may be required from, uh, Snapping Shoals. And, uh, so these are charges that, uh, would be added, uh, to the operations and maintenance of the nine-one-one, uh, service and center. Uh, and so we are requesting that, um, the board approve this, uh, amendment to the agreement.
Thank you, sir. Uh, guys, I seek a motion, please. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I guess we're looking for a motion to approve the, uh, simply approve the contract. Edward. Motion to approve the contract between Snapping Shoals Fiber, uh, between Snapping Shoals and, uh, and Newton County.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? It's been motion by, uh, Commissioner, um, Edwards and second by Commissioner Schultz. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero. Next is a proclamation, proclamation recognizing the, the twenty, the tw- recognizing the, the year of twenty-twenty-one as the Newton County bicentennial and the celebration of the two-hundredth anniversary of Newton County. This is what we're gonna send to our state, um, delegation. Uh, Ms. Tanya Anderson is going to take it to the House, and we're gonna try to get it, um, recognized, uh, by the governor a- as well. Uh, it's a proclamation recognizing the year two thousand and twenty-one as the Newton County, Georgia bicentennial celebration, the two-hundred-year anniversary of Newton County. Whereas Newton County, Georgia was created as a county and political subdivision of the state of Georgia on December twenty-fourth, eighteen twenty-one pursuant to the local act of the General Assembly of the State of Georgia, Georgia laws, eighteen twenty-one, page thirty-eight. And whereas the year of two thousand and twenty-one marks the two-hundred-year of Newton County's existence as a county and a political subdivision of the state of Georgia. And whereas the Newton County Board of Commissioners seek to appropriately recognize and celebrate thi- this historic two-hundred-year anniversary of the county's existence by marking the, the, the year two thousand twenty-one as Newton County bicentennial. Now therefore, the Newton, the Newton County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim as follow. The year two thousand twenty-one is hereby commemorated as the bicentennial year of the creation of Newton County, Georgia. The Newton County Board of Commissioners hereby celebrate this historic anniversary in recognition of the county's rich history, heritage, uh, cultural and community, and its contribution to the prosperity of the welfare of the state of Georgia. So proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners. We're gonna send that to our, um, governor and have him, uh, recognize our community, our, as, uh, uh, on this two-hundred-year and its bicentennial. So we're gonna, we'll need a motion to approve that. Uh, Commissioner Schultz.
I would be honored to make the motion to approve the proclamation recognizing the year twenty-twenty-one as the Newton County bicentennial and celebrating the two-hundredth anniversary of Newton County.
Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Schultz and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, uh, the honorable, uh, Brian Kemp, he'd be coming in here to-
No, sir, I plan to, um, I plan to do a Newton County Day, where we take the commissioners and, um, our team, and we go up to the Capitol. A lot of other counties do it, they do it once a year. Uh, we're gonna try to, uh, get on the governor's schedule so we can go up there and be recognized, our community to be recognized. Any more discussion? You got something? You good? Okay, all in favor? Thank you, it passes five to zero. Next is item number sixteen, fire service requests approval of the purchase of Engine Four, Four, uh, Stiffin Heavy Duty Pumper Fire Truck for Station Four. Um, funding source, Station Four bonds. Mr. Curry.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Um, we're requesting your approval to, for purchase of this, um, pumper. And the reason that we're doing this now is that, um, if your approval to purchase the truck will allow us to issue a, a purchase order, and by doing so now, uh, we can save, uh, about seventy thousand dollars in cost or price increase that would become effective, uh, January first. Um, so the funding source will be, this is part of what the bond is gonna pay for. Um, but, uh, the reason we're requesting it at this point is so we can save that money for the county. So, um, we're simply asking that you approve this purchase.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please. Um, um, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This time I'd like to make a motion we approve, for the approval of purchase of Engine Four, Sutton Heavy Duty Pumper Fire Truck for Station Four. Funding source, Station Four bond in the amount of six hundred and thirty-six dollars, six hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-one dollars and nineteen cents.
Can I get a second? It's been motion by Commissioner, um, Edwards and second by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. So, I'm trying to understand this. So out of five million dollars that, at some point, that will, will be bonded, that will come out of there, am I?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? All opposed? Let's try that again. No, 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 not you, not you, not you, not you, not you. Okay, all in favor? There we go, five to zero. Thank you. Yeah, I didn't see you, I didn't see you. Oh, dear. Sheriff Officer, um, purchasing requests approval of amendment to, for Barnsley Construction in amount of seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Mr. Curry.
Uh, excuse me, th- uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. I see Mr. Prime is here, who's our project manager, as well as the sheriff. I don't know if either or both of them would like to come up and explain, uh, what is being done on the project. I can certainly answer questions about the funding.
Good evening.
Good evening.
When we started the design of the renovation and expansion out of the, uh, detention facility, there were several items that were not able to be able to afforded in the original budget. So they were kind of put to the side. Um, these have now been explored with our design build team, and these are actual hard bid numbers to accomplish them. So the list includes completing the rest of the reskinning of the front of the building. You know, we've added the two additions on either side of the front of the building. We would be taking off the old ethos, which is deteriorating and, and failing, and putting a new metal panel system on top of that. Uh, we would be repairing and putting in new ceilings in both of the lobbies on both sides. Um, we would be adding a new window in the chief deputy's office, uh, re-roofing the entry barrel roofs, um, on top of it. We would also be, um, where's it at here? Reworking three of the internal offices where we are tying into the existing building on the west side of the building. And then the last item would be, um, the reworking of the intake. Uh, the intake was, uh, in, in need of modernization and reorganization to make the flow work better and to give a better, secure environment for those that are coming through that system. So all these items have been worked with our design build team, priced, and we're asking for your approval to move forward with that amendment.
And it, and this will be in the budget, within the budget?
And this is, this is covered by the, the SPOS budget for the first three items, and then the capital budget for the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Um, I seek a motion, please. I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, prove it as stated.
Who's second? It's been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and seconded by Commissioner Cowan. Any discussion? Commissioner Schultz?
So I need to understand the money a little better. So it says in here that the change order of the twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven is covered by the contingency fund of the SLOSS.
Yes, ma'am.
So the SLOSS that is funding the project, there's a contingency component, and that money is coming out of there.
The original SLOSS budget that we used at the beginning of the project. We, in addition to having monies in for construction that, for the Barnsley Construction, we had a contingency fund to cover unforeseen issues. And that's what these, that's what these three items are coming out of.
Okay, so I get that. So the seven hundred and fifty thousand, that's not coming out of capital improvements on the SLOSS? That's our regular capital improvement part, correct?
Yes, correct. Originally, initially, the sheriff's office budgeted, there was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted for capital improvements repairs and various things inside of the sheriff's budget. We moved that seven hundred and fifty thousand to capital improvements so that in the event that all of the repairs that they had in mind were not able to be completed during the fiscal year, that they would still have access to that money to roll over to the next year, if it was necessary. So the seven hundred and fifty thousand that you see there is that money that was earmarked for the sheriff's office.
But that was in the FY twenty-one budget?
It is in our FY twenty-one budget, yes.
So we're not asking for?
We're not asking for additional.
New request?
Yeah.
Anyone else? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you. Next is item number eighteen, HR and risk management, consideration of approval of ACCG workers' compensation insurance policy renewal proposal. I see we got HR Amanda and Pam here tonight.
Can y'all see me smiling?
I'm sorry?
I said, can y'all see me smiling?
We can.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The request we have before you is to seek approval of the renewal premium for our ACCG workers' compensation insurance policy. The workers' compensation insurance premium is based on several factors, which include the payroll of our organization, class codes, and an experience modifier. We are pleased to announce that our experience modifier for 2021 has decreased to zero point nine-nine. This rating indicates that our claims history over the past three years is slightly above average in comparison to the industry norm. We once again met the requirements for the ACCG safety discount resulting in a seven point five reduction on our premium total, which is a saving of sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-five. We also received a volume of scheduled modifier discount. The annual premium for 2021 policy is in the amount of two hundred, two thousand, two hundred and twenty-five. This item was budgeted for in the 2021 fiscal year, and this amount falls within the budgetary projection. Lastly, I would like to thank, I would like to add that creating an effective safety culture is an ongoing process and is a large commitment that requires the efforts of each and every employee. Therefore, I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank all our county employees for their positive attitudes and their individual and team efforts in improving Newton County's safety culture. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, guys? I seek a motion, please. Mr. Schultz?
Sorry, a move for approval of the ACCG workers' compensation insurance policy renewal proposal.
Second.
Thank you. It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and seconded by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you so much. Item number nineteen, go ahead, guys.
This request is to seek approval of a new resolution that will remove the 2017 workers' compensation coverage resolution for the volunteer firefighters in which we no longer employ, no longer employ volunteer firefighters. So therefore, we're trying to revert, revert back to our previous resolution, which only included the authorization of workers' compensation coverage for our elected officials. So originally, we had it for our elected officials to have workers' compensation. We added our volunteer firefighters in 2017. We no longer have them, so we are trying to revert back so that there's no, so that we can clarify that it's just for the officials, the county officials.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You say elected workers' compensation?
That's correct.
So if I don't get, so if I don't get re-elected, so I get workers' comp?
You're covered, you're currently covered, and you have been currently covered under our workers' compensation program. But when we elected to include our volunteer firefighters, it created a new resolution, and so now we're trying to revert this one back because we no longer have the volunteer firefighters.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, I just learn something every day.
Anyone else? I seek a motion, please.
I move for approval of resolution R-120120B.
Second.
Which one of y'all got? It's been motioned by Commissioner Schultz and seconded, I'm going to give Commissioner Edwards this one because that's who I heard first. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes five to zero, thank you. Thank you so much, guys, thank you for all that you do. Next is Public Works Transportation. Our request an approval by the VOC to submit resurfacing project list to GDOT. I think I seen Chester, okay, Chester's here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's that time of year to submit the application for the LME, the local maintenance and improvement grant from GDOT. And I submitted a project list, road list, to resurface to the board and are requesting that you allow me to submit it for the grant.
Chester, I got a quick question for you.
Yes.
So do this list have to be in by the first of the year?
The deadline is generally January first, but this year because of COVID is February.